Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, March 17, 2022. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Ray Rauer.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez Jr.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. Next, why don't we adopt this evening's agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Hernandez Jr. to adopt the agenda. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the agenda is adopted. And the first two items on our agenda are Poppy Day proclamations, one for the American Legion Post 334 and Auxiliary, and one Poppy Day proclamation for the VFW Post 9625 and Auxiliary. If I could invite them up front, I'll meet you out front and we will do these. Welcome. I have two proclamations tonight, and I figured out that if we just read the first paragraph from one and then the second paragraph of the other one, then we'll be good here. So, and you are from the American Legion Post, and you are from the American Legion and from the VFW, so we've got it all covered here. All right. All right. Well, whereas the Coon Rapids American Legion Post 334 and Auxiliary have adopted the poppy as their commemorative symbol and, just a second, whereas the Coon Rapids Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 9625 and the Veterans of Foreign Wars Auxiliary have adopted the poppy as their commemorative symbol and, whereas the memorial poppy assembled by disabled veterans pays respectful tribute to those killed in war and also benefits the living veterans and their families, and whereas public donations for poppies fund rehabilitation programs within each local community that benefits veterans, their families, and ultimately our state and nation, and whereas the basic purpose of the annual distribution of poppies is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living. Now, therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the City of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the Coon Rapids City Council hereby proclaim May 27, 2022, it's the same day, right?
Yep.
Oh, good. May 27, 2022, to be Poppy Day, urging all citizens of Coon Rapids to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously and to wear a poppy as mute evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defense of the freedoms which we continue to enjoy as American citizens proclaimed this 17th day of May 2022. If you would like to introduce yourself and then maybe tell us a little bit, whatever you're going to tell us, I was at.
I'm Diane Bowman. I am the poppy chairman for the Coon Rapids American Legion Auxiliary, and we will be out on May 20 and 21 over here at Cub on Northdale and Hanson and Walmart in Riverdale. The VFW has already gone out, so they're doing flea markets instead.
Not judging.
No, no. I mean, I won't, I can't be there helping them, but I'm, but I will be there pushing, I mean, not pushing, helping, helping the, all the volunteers, yes, yes, this is it.
I'm Sandy Livingston. I'm with the Coon Rapids American Legion Post 334 and also the Auxiliary. I am also the gambling manager for the post, and we do have poppies available and poppy cards available at the North Bar and Grill where we have our gambling premise. So if you want to get a poppy card, we do display them on the booth, and they're all over the booth, so.
And I'm Dave Livingston. I happen to be the honor of being the commander of the American Legion Post 334 in Coon Rapids, and I'm also a member of the American Legion Auxiliary in dedication to my wife, who's also a veteran, so.
Nice. And then, to be clear, it was May 20 and 21 at the Cub on Northdale and the Walmart on Round Lake Boulevard?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Excellent. Let me give you the proclamations.
All right.
And I thank you very much for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. We're up to item three, which is to approve the minutes of the May 3 meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, okay.
I will make a motion to table the approval of the minutes of the May 3 meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Geisler, second by Johnson, to table the minutes. There's no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. We've got one, two, three, four, five, six items on our consent agenda tonight, starting with item four, which is the first, to approve a temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license for the 4th of July Community Celebration to the Coon Rapids North Star Lions. Summer is here. We are looking at the, nice, nice. So Stephen A. Wells, on behalf of the Coon Rapids North Star Lions, has applied for a temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license to be used at the 4th of July Community Celebration to be located at the Coon Rapids Ice Center Boulevard Plaza, 11,000 Crooked Lake Boulevard on July 2, 3, and 4, 2022. The appropriate fees have been paid, the certificate of insurance for liquor liability is on file, and the background investigation has been completed and approved by the Police Department. The temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license will be valid from 8:00 a.m. to midnight from July 2 through July 4, 2022. So with this, we will be approving a temporary strong beer and wine liquor license for the Coon Rapids North Star Lions for the use of the 4th of July Community Celebration from July 2 through July 4, 2022. Next, we are accepting a right-of-entry agreement with Ridgecrest Coon Rapids 1 LLC. At the March 17, 2022 Planning Commission meeting, Ridgecrest Coon Rapids received conditional site plan approval for a two-building restaurant slash retail development of the former Golden Corral Restaurant at 3580 Main Street. The new properties will be addressed, well, different means, 3574 and 3578 Main Street and 3582 Main Street. The right-of-entry agreement allows the city to periodically enter the property to exercise hydrants and valves and flush the water main system. The utility and drainage system within the site are considered private, and the property owner will continue to own and maintain these items. This right-of-entry agreement simply provides the city the ability to ensure appropriate public safety. So we're looking to accept the attached right-of-entry agreement with Ridgecrest Coon Rapids 1 LLC for a proposed two-building restaurant retail development to be located at 3574, 3578, and 3582 Main Street. Item six is to adopt Resolution 22-65, correcting the legal description to vacate drainage and utility easements. This goes back to the December 16, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Conforty Holdings received conditional site plan approval to construct a building expansion and other site improvements at 8945 Evergreen Boulevard. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 22-65, correcting the legal description to vacate the drainage and utility easements for the property located at 8945 Evergreen Boulevard. Item seven, which is, we're looking to approve Resolution 22-67, the CDBG program, urban qualification process. Every three years, cities and counties receiving community development block grant CDBG and home investment partnership program, which is H O M E, funds must complete an urban requalification process to continue receiving and administering these funds from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. The current requalification process includes fiscal years 2023 to 2025. Due to its population, the City of Coon Rapids qualifies as a metropolitan city, and this designation means the city may receive its own entitlement funds from the federally funded CDBG and home programs. At this time, Anoka County is looking for us to make a decision to either opt in and become a participant with Anoka County for their CDBG funds, or to opt out and accept the entitlement status, becoming a direct recipient of CDBG entitlement funds during fiscal years 2023 to 2025. The city deferred their status in fiscal years 2020 to 2022, and the deadline to make a determination is May 31. The county uses these funds for a home improvement program for lower-income households throughout the county, and the city assists in marketing the availability of this program. The city began working with the county's program in 2018. Since that time, seven grants totaling $143,677 have been made to Coon Rapids residents. The county temporarily suspended the program during the COVID-19 pandemic. In 2021, the county resumed the program, and we have requested an update on any new applications processed, and we'll share that information on Tuesday night. So we're going to get some, do we have that tonight?
Mayor, just to clarify, yes, well, the grant, the number of home improvement grants has not changed.
Okay.
But the CDBG funds are used for additional activities, not just home improvement. So there's over $900,000 that have been invested in Coon Rapids to nonprofits and other agencies working in our community. So it's a much higher amount than what I have on the report.
I'm happy, because I thought, it seems like we should be getting more than that, and maybe we should reconsider this, but, okay. So we are getting a good portion of those funds back here then?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right. So we're looking to approve the opt-in, continuing the current arrangements with Anoka County to administer the CDBG and home funds in Coon Rapids for the next three-year funding cycle. Item eight is to approve a master contracting agreement with Empire Pipe Services. We're just formalizing our ongoing relationships with contractors. A master contracting agreement has been prepared to provide consistency in the approach to complete projects, resolve needed repairs, speed up the process to ensure items are addressed in a timely manner, and allow staff to better manage the services provided. So we are looking to approve a master contracting agreement with Empire Pipe Services and authorize city officials to execute the attached agreement for professional contracting services. And then item nine, which is the last item on our consent agenda, is to approve the minutes for the local Board of Appeal and Equalization meetings, April 26 and May 10. We held the initial meeting on April 26 and then kept it open and reconvened on May 10. After further review, multiple property values were adjusted. So we're looking to approve the local Board of Appeal and Equalization meeting minutes for April 26 and May 10.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Ray Rauer.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rauer, second by Geisler. Is there any discussion or questions from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
I should be abstaining on the vote, correct?
No, you're good.
All right.
Well, I mean, you were, you were at half that one meeting, so why would you abstain from the whole consent agenda?
I just have to ask.
Yeah. And no matter how you asked, I was going to be the contrarian, so.
I appreciate that, your mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
I've got a question. You alluded to it a little bit, but on consent agenda number seven, with the community development block grants and opting into the county's program for that, I just want to make sure, Grant, maybe you can help me, but if we opt in like we did last year, do we still get all of our eligible entitlement funds, or do our eligible entitlement funds go into the city's pool that other cities in Anoka County can utilize? How does that work?
Mayor and Councilmember Grisgoviac, so yes, if we opt back into the program like we did for the last funding cycle, our allocation goes into that countywide program. So we're not guaranteed dollars like we were when we operated the program on our, on our own. But that was a decision we made several years ago because it was, for a variety of reasons, largely because of the administrative responsibility.
So could you tell us, of the eligible funds that we would have gotten if we would have opted out, how is, how is Coon Rapids doing for getting that, those entitlement funds back into our city? Is it 90% of it? Is it 110% of it? Do we know?
So I was pulling together some information before the meeting, and I mentioned earlier that the actual amount that we have, or I shouldn't say received, the amount of money that the county has invested or spent in Coon Rapids since 2019 is $963,000. My recollection back when we were administering the program was somewhere around $200,000 a year. So for three or four years, you know, roughly the same amount, maybe even a little bit more has been invested in Coon Rapids.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
I'm just kind of, I would like to maybe think about, if we opted out and did our own program and hired someone to administer that, would we be money ahead, so to speak? Or have we done all that evaluation and it makes most sense financially to opt in with the county? I understand that there's administrative things, and some things changed over the last three or four years that we did that, but have we looked at it again since then?
Mayor, Councilmember Grisgoviac, we have not. Back when we administered the program, it was primarily used for home improvement financing. There are a number of restrictions. It's a very challenging program to administer, and so using the program for the CDBG funds for housing rehab was the most efficient way for doing that. But we didn't have the ability to do that in-house, and we lost the administrative agency. So we felt, you know, just given the amount of funds, what it would take to administer the program locally, it made sense to go back into the county's program. I don't think anything has changed at this point where our recommendation would be different. You know, we can certainly look at that as we go forward, but we think it's the, it's in the best interests of the city at this time.
And then just one last question, if I might. Do we, can we, do we know what our entitlement amount would be? What is our portion of the entitlement funds going into the county's pool? What's that number?
Councilmember Grisgoviac, no, we don't. That calculation would be made if we decided to opt in. So we don't, we don't have an analysis for what the number would otherwise be. It's, it's lumped into the county's program.
And that was the one you estimated was maybe 200,000 a year, though, I thought?
That's what it was back in the day, correct?
Okay. So whether it's grown from then, or, we don't know. I just, I remember.
Would like to know.
I, I remember the staff was very stressed about trying to administer this program.
Because we lost that administrative service that was doing it, and then the default to the county.
Yeah.
I remember.
Yeah. And I, and I remember they were, they weren't going to be able to even use all the money, and so, I don't know. Okay, I'm, I'm good with letting this run one more time, but.
Right, right. I just wanted to get those questions out.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Good questions. All right. Any other questions on the consent agenda? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. We are up to item 10 under new business, which is to consider Resolution 22-68, approving the 2022 and 2023 International Association of Firefighters Labor Agreement. Ms. Roth, did you want to cover this?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Awesome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The council has requested to formally ratify the terms of the negotiated labor agreement from January, effective January 1, 2022 to December 31, 2023, between the City of Coon Rapids and the International Association of Firefighters Union, Local Number 1935, representing the firefighter's bargaining unit. It's a two-year term, 2022 to 2023. The agreement has been reached between the city manager and the International Association of Firefighters Union, and it was, the agreement was reached after both parties met with a neutral mediator provided by the State of Minnesota Bureau of Mediation Services. The union membership ratified the contract. There's an error here, I'd like to correct it. It says February, it's actually, it was ratified by the union on May 13, 2022. A summary of what was agreed upon is the terms of the contract, a two-year term, 3% COLA increase to the base wages effective January 1, 2022, and then 3% COLA increase effective the following year on January 1, 2023. Also, the captain's rate was increased from 7.5% above top fire to 10% above top fire. The pay was adjusted to better reflect the external market comparables positions for, of this position and the fire union.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson.
I'm going to move adoption of Resolution Number 22-68, approving the labor agreement between the city and the International Association of Firefighter Union, Local Number 1935.
Aye, second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Hernandez Jr.
Your Honor.
Discussion, Councilmember Johnson.
So a couple of comments and then perhaps a question for Mr. Stemwaddle. Comment would be, I really do appreciate city staff considering the market and market-based adjustments for the firefighters. We have professional firefighters in Coon Rapids, and we take great pride in that, and, and I think we have among the best fire services in Anoka County, but perhaps even in the state of Minnesota, and we want to keep it that way, at least I want to keep it that way. But I do have a question, and that is, you know, here we are in May, and one of these COLA adjustments is a 3% that goes back in time to January. How does that get handled then if this is ratified? Is that paid off in a lump sum? Are they going to get it in the next paycheck? How does that work out?
Mayor and Council, yes, they would get retro payback to January 1, sort of settle up on their next paycheck. So it would just sort of come all at once, and then going forward, they would be at the new approved rate into the next part of this year.
Is this the latest it's gone for a while to resolve these things?
It's definitely later. I would say with all of the negotiations seemed to start later, in part because we were a little bit later last year, in part because of market conditions. There's a lot of unions and employer cities in our case that were waiting a little longer this year to see how things developed going into it. So longer, but I would say in the, in the greater context of settlements across metro cities, this really isn't a late one, all things being considered, especially if you had to go into mediations or arbitrations or things like that. A lot of contracts are still open for 2022 across the metro, and we like to get them done sooner. This was just the reality of negotiating this year.
Speaking as somebody who is also in during-the-day job, a public employee, I would just, I want to pass on a thought, and, and that is, I appreciate there are two sides in a bargain and an exchange, but there is, it becomes even more acute when you have an economy like we have today where gas prices are going up and up and up, and there's a lot of uncertainty about things, and then to take five, five and a half months to settle something where, frankly, the city benefits on the time value of money rather than the employee benefits on the time value of money. I just want to say that so that you can keep that in mind in the future, and I wonder if there might not be a way in the future to negotiate something that, that makes a recognition that the city is holding on to the money for a little bit longer, because if it's not in the hands of the firefighters and also with the police later on, you know, it's not getting to the right place, and most of these people live in the city or the surrounding community, and so the money benefits us all, and it helps them along the way. So, but thank you for, I really mean it, thank you for focusing on the market, because not all public entities and agencies consider the market. They just kind of think what would be an easy COLA, and the market's really important to keep the talent there. Thank you.
Okay. Any, Councilmember Ray Rauer?
I just also want to add that I thank the city and I thank the firefighters, Local Number 1935, for the hard work and the time spent, the hours spent, the efforts you did in coming to this collective bargaining agreement, and I appreciate our firefighters very much. It, it's definitely a tough job. I recently learned more about the firefighters as my daughter is doing a study and spending time at a local station periodically, and it, it is, it is a tough job. So I just want to say thank you, and I appreciate coming to the agreement.
Thank you. Is the, the captain's rate, does that also retroactive to January 1?
It would be, yes.
Okay, all right. All right. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item 11 is to consider Resolution 22-62, 22-63, and 22-64, approving miscellaneous 2022-1 appealed assessment levies. And the assessment hearing on miscellaneous assessments was held on March 22, 2022. Property owners who objected to their assessments were referred to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals for review. After the Board of Adjustment and Appeals heard objections on May 5, 2022, the following recommendations have been made, and there are several here. Most were to affirm the original amount, but there are a few that were also reduced, and I just have to really thank the Board of Adjustment and Appeals for all of their work on this. This is really, thank you for doing this job, because this is kind of a thankful job, or thankless job. So, does anybody have any questions on this, or somebody want to?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Councilmember Geisler?
To adopt Resolutions 22-62, 22-63, and 22-64, adopting the 2022 Sub 1 Special Miscellaneous Special Assessments, contested miscellaneous assessments, one-year, three-year, and 10-year.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Carlson. Is there a discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac?
Is the assessment fee, the $40 assessment fee, is that new for this year? Does anybody know?
I don't believe so. Mayor, council, no. You know, we would have to have increased that during our annual fee. I don't recall that one being a recent one.
All right. I just don't ever remember being in our packet before, but, so, okay.
All right. Any other discussion or questions on this? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item 12 is to consider Resolution Number 22-14 Sub 8, accepting plans and specifications for East and West Water Treatment Plant roof replacements and authorizing solicitation of bids. Under an executed agreement for professional services, facility staff coordinated with Quatica LLC to develop plans and specifications for roof replacements at the city's east and west water treatment plants. Work will include, at the east water treatment plant, removing and replacing approximately 9,000 square feet of existing built-up roofing systems, and replace the roofing insulation and prefinished sheet metal flashing, and at the west water treatment plant, remove and replace approximately 17,720 square feet of existing built-up roofing systems, and replace the roofing insulation and prefinished sheet metal flashing. Staff prepared all items necessary to bid this project and are looking for council's approval to advance the bidding process. If approved, advertisement were bids, for bids. If approved, advertisement for bids would begin May twentieth with a bid opening scheduled for June ninth, and it is anticipated that bid results and a recommendation for contract award will be presented to council at the June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two meeting. Pending award of contract, work would begin mid to late July and be completed in twenty twenty-two. Does anybody have any questions about this or need more information?
Mayor?
Councilmember Ray Rower?
I make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-two dash fourteen sub-eight approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids for the east and west WTP roof replacements project.
Second motion? Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Hernandez, Jr. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. And we are back to Ms. Roth with the, as we consider the two thousand and twenty-two police officer labor agreement and consider adoption of resolution twenty-two dash sixty-six, approving the labor agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council's requested to formally ratify the terms of the negotiated labor agreement between the city of Coon Rapids and law enforcement labor services, Local Two-O-Seven, representing the police officers bargaining unit. A two-year contract, January one, twenty twenty-two to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Agreement has been reached between the city manager and law enforcement labor services, Local Two-O-Seven, which represents city's police officers. Membership ratified the contract in May of twenty twenty-two. A summary of the agreement is a two-year contract. Wages amended as follows. Wage increase three percent COLA and a eighty-five cent hour market adjustment for both years, effective January one, twenty twenty-two, and January one, twenty twenty-three. So again, three percent COLA increase and then a market adjustment of eighty-five cents. Also, we agreed upon administrative options consistent with the city employ handbook when determining vacation awards for new police officer hires with significant applicable experience. So the COLA adjustment mirrors what has been offered to other labor agreements and unrepresented employees. The eighty-five cent market adjustment was provided to better match comparable wages for police officers in our market. The agreement to have administrative rights consistent with the employ handbook as it relates to the vacation award is to improve our ability to remain competitive when we are recruiting lateral police officers.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Carlson?
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-two dash six-six, approving the labor agreement in all MOUs between the city and law enforcement labor services, Local Two-O-Seven.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Johnson. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I just have one question I want to make sure that I'm clear on, because typically we've got COLA, which is, you know, the three percent each of the contract years. And I just want to make sure that the eighty-five cents per hour is this year and an additional eighty-five cents next year. Is that correct? Okay. I wanted to make sure the wording was good. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Councilmember Ray Rower?
Since I said a thank you to our other local, I would also like to thank the city and our law enforcement, Local Two-O-Seven, for the same thing, for working hard on this, taking your time. Negotiating is a tough process, and I just appreciate that you came to this agreement, and also thank you for your service. We definitely want to be able to attract with our recruiting and also retain our officers. And we have a great police department here in Coon Rapids, and we want to keep it that way. So thank you.
Your honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
I, I would echo that, and I do really appreciate the kind of thinking outside of the box. So the, the ability to deal with kind of lateral employees and vacation, that's huge. In, in many communities, when you get a new employee, but they're a lateral, they kind of go back to zero. And having the flexibility to work on that and to recruit that talent on a lateral basis is huge. But I also want to say the MOU you have with the detectives, I really appreciate it. Since I got on this council eight years ago, I was really advocating that we take much more role in our in-house detective work, especially after hours. And making sure that we're incentivizing officers, especially talented officers, to, to do that on-call work and to have detectives available is huge because these are people who will get called out to murder scenes. These are people that will get called out to really serious crimes that'll happen at all sorts of odd hours, and, and that needs to be recognized in the compensation. So thank you very much for thinking along those lines, and I'm happy to support this.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. And we are up to the open mic public comment. Is anybody here for open mic this evening? Okay. Seeing nobody is here for open mic, we don't have a report on our previous open mic.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
Mr. Stemwaddle has.
Mayor and council, I'm a bit remiss in that we should have had a report on the previous open mic.
And had some conversation with folks in the police department today because the central question of the open mic from a couple of weeks ago was about enforcing ordinances and state statute related to noise, mufflers, you name it, primarily as it relates to the Saturday night cruising that goes on. But I think as we get into spring and summer, we hear complaints all over the city, you know, primarily with people accelerating at stop signs and streetlights and things like that. The, the issue of noise at the cruise presents a particular challenge in that the state statute with regard to mufflers is a bit subjective, you know, requires a value call, frankly, of the officer to decide if the noise being created by the muffler or the lack of muffler, the vehicle, whatever is happening is excessive and sort of abnormal doesn't blend into the general background. And in the situation of the cruise, that can be a challenge when you've got dozens of cars potentially lined up at one light and accelerating at basically the same time. So while it is a priority of the officers who patrol that cruise, it can be a challenge from that perspective. You have to pinpoint the specific vehicle and kind of hear and see and know what's going on. And then the second challenge is, can I safely get to and pull that person over in a timely manner? And those do happen, you know, it's not infrequent, it's not the most common ticket that's given as part of the Saturday night cruise, but it does occur. Although I got some comments from our resident expert in this area, Steve Beeberg, many of you are familiar with Officer Beeberg, he's very familiar with traffic enforcement in our community. And he said that it's, one thing to note is that the, the ticket itself doesn't do a whole lot to dissuade people from modifying their exhaust systems. It's a hundred and twenty-five dollars. It's a non-moving violation, doesn't really go against your record, and so some people see it as cost of doing business, if you will, to have a louder vehicle, motorcycle, you name it. And then those other things I mentioned, just the challenge of the cruise itself. On a normal summer night, it's a matter of being at the right place at the right time, probably having that person be unaware of the fact that there's an officer watching them, otherwise they accelerate a little slower at that intersection, create less noise, that sort of thing. You know, to enforce, enforce our city ordinance, you know, we've had some discussions in the past about the challenges with trying to read the decibels of a particular car, again, given that there's a lot of other things going on in the periphery, the challenge that an officer might have with that. So while it is a part of what they do enforce, it's one of the more challenging things to enforce compared to speed, which is fairly obvious when that happens and, and other things. So those were some of the comments. We'll formalize that into a better response for the particular resident who made those requests, and we'll get that sent out to them.
The, the hundred and twenty-five dollar fee for the, is that an escalating one? So, I mean, do we know? Is it an escalating one? So if they were to get caught again? I know you just said this thing to the cost, the cost of doing business. Does the cost of doing business go up? You know?
It does not on most particular types of offenses. Petty misdemeanors are petty misdemeanors. And so, I think it's actually, to be accurate, I think it's a hundred and thirty-eight if you put in the law library fee, but, but in, again, still.
Is that the, is that the statutory maximum for it?
Um, well, it'd be a petty misdemeanor, so that's the fine amount that's, I think, imposed by the state court system. I mean, a maximum penalty on a petty misdemeanor is three hundred dollars, but there's a state finelist, much like we do, and I'm pretty sure for, I'm not a hundred percent certain on mufflers, but I would think a hundred and thirty-eight or a hundred and twenty-eight would be in that range, which is what a typical low-speed offense is.
I just think it's remarkable. Forty-one years ago, Officer Lonnie Hayes was cruising with a microphone outside of his squad car, checking decimals. And it just seems like forty-one years later, we should have better technology, you know?
I can tell you, we are issuing tickets out there, and we are seeing them in court. I mean, we've had a couple of them on, one of the prosecutors was mentioning yesterday from last year's cruise, so they do eventually get to court. We do handle them if they do challenge them.
Well, thankfully, he didn't write a citation. He let me go. I showed him the receipt for my new exhaust. Mr. Stemwaddle?
Just one follow-up comment. We are attempting to ramp up enforcement activities out there and really base it on what we think will be the ebb and flow of the weekly events. If there's nice weather, you can expect a lot more of a crowd, that sort of thing. We've requested some assistance from the city of Anoka and Anoka County recently, and apparently last Saturday, they did actually have some presence out in the Boulevard with our officers, who we attempt to post some on overtime. And that goes up and down throughout the summer as officers have different availability. But so that, that is a part of our efforts, too, is to have a larger preference out there, presence out there, and then to address hotspots. So if there's a particular parking lot where there's a lot of burnouts or noise being made, you know, post an officer there, perhaps undercover. We're also using the borrowing of vehicle from the state that helps us with distracted driving enforcement. So it's equipped with different equipment than you would see in a typical vehicle, and it's kind of stealth, you're not going to know it's there until probably it pulls you over. And that's something we're borrowing for several weeks and has been pretty effective in identifying any of those distracted driving type of issues. So there are different tactics we're trying, none of them are perfect, that's for certain.
All right. It'd be interesting to know, because it seems like there's a bit of a change of attitude. Two years ago, pretty much everybody was excited about this, except for very few that were impacted that were very negative about it. And now I'm starting to see more of the residents are kind of going a little, yeah, I'm tired of this now, you know? But it'd be interesting maybe to do that poll again one of these days, a survey. Who was, somebody started to talk on.
Yeah, I was just wondering, would there be anything that we can do to help our officers enforce, enforce that noise? I mean, can you do a local noise ordinance? I've noticed some towns will say the jack break-ins prohibited because that's really loud when the semis use, use their engine to brake. Is there any flexibility like that?
Mayor and council, I think we're challenged by the, the noise component of it. You know, we've, we've had some conversations about cruising and what's constitutional, what might not be constitutional, that's sort of what would pass the muster as far as that goes, that not only in Minnesota, but other states have attempted to experiment over time, because as you've all mentioned, this isn't necessarily a new issue. City of Anoka dealt with a lot of this for some number of years. So, I don't know, on top of mine, I can't think of anything, Dave. I know you've looked into this a little more specifically than I have.
Specifically the noise? We have looked into it. I mean, I mean, there's a state statute, we have an unreasonable acceleration ordinance, we also have our own noise ordinance, we have the muffler statute. I mean, but they're all, again, kind of that, you know, unreasonable standard, or they require a, you know, a meter out there, which makes it difficult to discern which one or taking the time to do that. And so, like I said, I don't think, and I'm sure Sergeant Jacobson can attest, it's not from a lack of effort from the police department or the prosecutor's office, but it's, you know, when you get that number, I mean, I'm imagining right now, there's dozens of people speeding down Highway ten as we speak, you know? And so to be able to catch every single person is, is not, not feasible, but obviously it sounds like we're, at least from a police perspective, putting a lot of resources into that. And like I said, it's showing, we see them in court.
Your honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
So I, I agree with everything Mr. Brody said. There's another statute, though, and I would not normally advocate pulling this one out in anything but other than the exceptional circumstance. But since the others are pettys, the public nuisance statute is six oh nine point seven four. Whoever by an act or failure to perform a legal duty intentionally does any of the following is guilty of maintaining a public nuisance which is a misdemeanor. Number one, maintains or permits a condition which unreasonably annoys, injures, or endangers the safety, health, morals, comfort, or repose of any considerable number of members of the public. Or, and then it goes on, and, and it includes other grounds. We're kind of getting closer. We're getting closer to that point because I think there are a considerable number of members of the public that are upset about this, that would frankly come in and testify if they wanted to. And, and I will say also, even the car clubs that are engaged in some of this are upset about some of the behavior that exists on Coon Rapids Boulevard, and, and might even be willing to share information, provide video, support the police department, because many of them are supporters of our law enforcement. And I know it's not the easiest thing in the world, but it does put a misdemeanor on the table.
Certainly does. And the only negative of six oh nine statutes is it doesn't go on your driving record, which is a good deterrent for most folks.
Yeah, but it's a misdemeanor.
It is a misdemeanor.
So it gives you a little bit more room there.
Yes, it does. So we will, like I said, we're open to any suggestions, and we'll look at anything.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Yeah. As, you know, my word is probably the most affected by the cruise, you know, and I, I relay emails and phone calls weekly and have for a couple of years. And literally, we have scoured laws and ordinances across the country, looking at ways that we can help curb that undesirable behavior. There are a lot of people who love watching the cool cars go up and down, and I think that's great. It's when you get the exhibition driving, when you get the burnouts, when you get the rolling coal, I mean, learned lots of new terms, that, that it's not necessarily safe or desirable for the people who live along the Boulevard. And trying to find that balance, you know, if everybody drove nicely, it would be fabulous. It's when they don't drive nicely that we have to put the enforcement out, and we're looking at all of our different options, and the police enforcement has been the most successful to date, and so I thank them for their presence. And I did see on the Boulevard last week, there was at least one unmarked and two in Anoka County and two sheriffs, in addition to our, our officers last weekend, so that was great.
Nice. Thank you. Thank you. I would, I guess I would, I would encourage us to consider or to continue to kind of look into noise, though, because since the cruise came up, I've noticed my calls about loud motorcycles in the middle of the night has kind of faded out, you know? But I'm sure that's going to come back again, you know, people on the major roads, you know, when the bars used to close at one and two and, you know? But, all right. Any other business to come before council tonight?
Mr. Mayor? I think, let's ask Ms. Lenz, Mayor, put her on the spot. Candidate filing should have opened today, if that's correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Geisler, that's correct. Candidate filing began today, will run through May thirty-first. Regular business hours, eight to four-thirty, with the exception of the thirty-first, will be open until five P.M. Information on the city's website, or you can call the clerk's office.
And so we have, what, Ward Three, Five, and the mayor? So anybody in those areas who is interested, make sure that you file, right? And then the other thing that people could be looking at is Home Help Minnesota. That's a program that has just been published. It's a state program, and that you can apply, you need to apply by June seventeenth, and there's funds available to help residents who have potentially fallen behind on their mortgage or their rent, and for assistance in that expenses during the pandemic. So if I've got all of that right, Mr. Stemwaddle?
I believe so.
Okay. So if you, if that is you, there is a program, make sure that you put in your application by June seventeenth.
Very good. So we're still a month and a half away from the Fourth of July celebration. Very good. So we're still a month and a half away from the 4th of July celebration, but there's a couple of things that have some preparations going on. One is the Firecracker 5K, the big, the run. And then the parade on Sunday, the parade will, you know, so if you're, if you've got a float or need to sign up. And then, then of course, there will be a car show. But then this will be the first of the first annuals of the all, Coon Rapids High School All Class Reunion will be Sunday night from 5:00 to 10:00.
Good idea.
So they did an all-class reunion back in 2009 in conjunction with the 50th anniversary of the city, and it was a huge success. And what we're trying to do is we just want something that's going to happen every single year in conjunction with the 4th of July. And it'll be an all-class reunion on Sunday night, the 3rd, from 5:00 to 10:00. And so.
And, Mr. Mayor, I have two more things.
Okay.
On Saturday, May 21st, this coming Saturday, is Public Works Open House.
Oh, yes.
So, and take your little kitties over to the Public Works. They can get in the dump trucks. They can see the snow plows and all of the big equipment. It's a really fun time for the kids. And that's at the Public Works facility on Saturday. And it's 10:00 AM to noon for Saturday.
And it isn't just for kids.
Well, true.
I mean, it's people that pay a lot of taxes in town. It's nice to go see what you bought. You know, there's some expensive equipment in those garages.
Yeah, so, well, if you're a kid at heart, how's that? Yeah. And then we have our home remodeling tour. And that, this year is a virtual. And so with our Homes for Generations front door, there's a lot of work that our residents do on their homes. And this virtual remodeling tour is going to be available.
Thank you. Mr. Stemwell, your hand up.
I was going to mention the Public Works Open House, so glad we covered that. The last thing I was going to mention is the movie in the park on Friday, May 27th, three before Memorial Day, or a few days before Memorial Day. This time at Sand Creek Park, and they'll be watching Encanto. Movie will start about 8:45. Concessions will be available about an hour prior to the start of the movie. So it's a lot of fun for folks to go out there. I've done it a couple of times, and kids always enjoy it.
Bring a blanket, bring a chair, whatever.
Some bug spray maybe.
Don't talk about Bruno.
Okay. Any other business to come before council this evening? Dave, what's going on?
I just wanted to say, 28th, Memorial Day.
Oh, you know what? Would you come up to the mic, Dave, and, and tell us about that? Or Diane, or somebody? Would you come up to the, come up to the AMBO? That's a really important thing. So we've got our Memorial, Memorial Day remembrance.
Local council.
Yeah, go ahead, David.
Honored members of council, if I may, May 28th, there will be the annual Memorial Day Celebration. We will start at Morningside at 10 o'clock. And then we will move over through Bunker Hill Veteran Center after that for another ceremony. And then we will have a feed, putting on by Metro Marines?
Yes.
Metro Marines again. We invite everyone to honor those who have given their lives in, in defense of this country. And after that, 10th District of the American Legion Lighters will be having a ride benefiting the Magnus Foundation, leaving from Bunker Hill. So we invite everyone out there to remember. And we don't know them all, but we owe them all.
Perfect.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, David. Well, it's kind of hard to do anything after that.
And on that note, I would move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, second by Geisler to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.